Call to order, the Planning Board meeting of July 12th, 2022 at 7:06 PM. Please rise for the pledged allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Our first order of business this evening is an approval not required plan to define parcel six in the locus deed that is divided by the Carver-Plimpton town line located at Montello Street, Route 44 Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering representing Route 44 Development this evening. So I think we've got the wrong...
Do you have your other plan?
No, you got the next, you got the second one. So both of these A and R plans are the same. We're not creating any new lots where the purpose of these plans is to combine the lots that are in Carver and eliminate the, so we have a parcel in a deed that is, you know, half in Plimpton and half in Carver. And so they want to have a plan that's recorded, that's signed by the Planning Board as not a subdivision, that they can write a new deed and basically eliminate the Plimpton piece from the combined Carver lots. So, you know, you can see a light dashed line, there's a, you know, the assessor's maps are highlighted, and then you got light dashed lines. So parcel six in the deed referenced is both in... Excuse me? No, no, this is at the top of the plan. So if you, at the very top of the plan, map 24 lot 1-19 is in the town of Plimpton. And so they would like to combine their properties in Carver without including the land that is currently in Plimpton.
What?
And that goes for both of these plans. We've got two plans, so we need signatures from you tonight, and then we can file with Plimpton. And the other plan, if we can get signatures tonight, we would file with the town of Middleborough for their endorsement.
Currently, neither of these are, at this time, buildable properties.
That's noted on the plan. So map 20 lot 2, not a building lot by itself, but is to be combined with other land of Route 44 Development LLC. So they're going to combine parcels. You know, the buildability is a, is sort of a separate issue, but what we want to do is to be able to write a deed that does not include land that is situated in Plimpton.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah. So you're talking about parcel six, right?
Correct.
And you're trying to separate that part out?
Yes.
Or are you trying to combine that?
No, so, well, so we're, we're trying to combine all of the land that is, is within Carver and have that, you know, everything be in Carver, be on one deed, and Plimpton stays in Plimpton, Middleborough. The second plan coming up stays in, in Middleborough.
Okay, so you want to cleave off the part to the north and of the Plimpton town line?
Correct. The town line would become, you know, a reference property line in the new deed versus right now it's parcel six located partially in Plimpton, partially in Carver. So we just, we want to use the town line on both of these plans to, you know, to create a new deed which only contains land that is in Carver.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Please.
So we've got a couple of parcels that are in two different towns. We're making the lot line the town line. At some point in the future, they'll convey and collapse all those together, but for right now, we're just snapping off the parts that aren't in Carver with a new property line. So this plan carves off the Carver, the Plimpton property. The next plan carves off the Middleborough property.
Right. In terms of the deed, you know, it doesn't change the Carver, it doesn't change the Carver assessor's maps, it doesn't change the land that's in Carver or Plimpton, but it provides them with a plan that they can reference in a new deed which will not include any land other than what is in Carver.
What's the purpose of it?
To combine the lands in Carver and, you know, like I say, you've got to...
What's the purpose outside of combining them? I mean, what's the, why, why would you need, why would you need to do this?
Well, because the current deed, you know, one of the parcels in the current deed for the property is parcel six, which is in both Plimpton and Carver.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at the map that's labeled parcel six, and it's only in Carver.
No, if you looked in two spots, there, there are arrows that go across the town line. So location of parcel six, and it goes to the property line by the road, and it, and it goes to an interior parcel line. The, the plan is a lot more...
Right here? This little mini, this little map that you got that says parcel, it points to parcel six? That's all in Carver?
So, John, if I may, if you just look at the map for a second. So this piece of property, 24119, is currently in Carver and is currently in Plimpton. So the property line is going to be the town line. So all they're doing with this A and R plan is carving that lot, carving that parcel to make sure that its boundaries are wholly within Carver. That's the purpose of this plan, is to take those lots that stretch across the town line and make them into two. One wholly in Carver, one wholly in Plimpton.
And then turn around and combine them later? That's what you said?
Well, so the property in Carver is map 20 lot 2. Map 24 lot 1-19 is in Plimpton. We're not changing any lots.
I understand that.
We're not creating any lots.
No, I, I understand that, but you're saying that you're, you want to cleave, you want to cleave this off and create a new deed so that you can turn around later and combine them?
Well, the deed would, you know, effectively do that.
But why would you, why would you need to cleave it off if you're just going to combine them back?
Cleave it off is, cleave it off is a...
Jimmy, let me just ask a qualifying question here. When you were talking about putting all the properties together and joining them together.
Right.
Is this parcel that, that we're cleaving off tonight going to be part of that?
So we're not changing any lot lines tonight, but, so you have assessor's map lots, and you have parcels in an old deed. I don't know how far back it goes, but what they would like to be able to do is write a deed where it's all Carver land and describe the boundary of the property to be combined as being the town line with Plimpton and the town line with Middleborough.
So I think what Mr. Gasky's trying to get out of here is, is it your intention in the future to bring this particular piece of property back onto the singular lot?
That's, that's, I don't have that information. That's, so Route 44, Route 44 Development is doing this for a reason, and the reason is they want to have...
They want one lot in Carver.
Correct.
Okay.
And so they need a reference for the deed.
So currently, the intention is not to come back later on and put this back?
Well, if they wanted to further subdivide in the future, you know, that's, that's their right to do so, but, but right now, they're just trying to, you know, be able to have a deed that is wholly in Carver.
Yes.
The land is wholly in Carver.
But if they don't plan on building outside of Carver, what's the point?
Yeah. Well, they could have done this another way. This is, this is what their attorneys chose to do. I think this could very easily have been done with a Chapter 380 plan, no new lines and ways. They didn't want to do it that way. They wanted to have an endorsement as not a subdivision of land, and, and that's what we're here for this evening.
Any more questions?
I don't think he's going to be able to satisfy me at all.
Okay. No questions? The board will... This is, map 22 to 1.
So if I may.
Yes.
If the board was to make a motion, that motion might be moved to endorse a plan as, as shown on parcel six in the locus deed that divide into Plimpton and Carver.
Currently as non-buildable lots.
Correct.
And the board will accept that motion.
I'll make that second motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Discussion amongst the board? Um, I don't like it. Seeing none. Mr. Dion.
Mr. Dion says, yeah.
Mr. Gasky says nay. Mr. Shea says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
All right, and now we're on to the Middleborough side, which is parcel 14?
That's correct. So you see the light shaded line around the, there's open water, there's, you know, a lot of wetlands on this, on this piece. Again, in, in Carver, it's map 20 lot 2, and in Middleborough, it's map 35 lot 748. And, you know, most of the land is in Carver. There's a, you know, a smaller portion that's, it's in Middleborough, and it's the same purpose as the prior plan.
I see Brook Street on the map?
That's Brook Street in Middleborough?
Yes. Is that a paper route, or is that right of way, or?
I, I don't know, sir.
It's like it says ancient way on it, whatever that means.
Well, I don't know what ancient way means, but I don't know that this, this is one. Okay, so we've labeled it as an ancient way, and so we've made that determination.
Forgive me, but what is an ancient way?
So an ancient way is, is a way that was in existence years ago, usually many years ago, prior to zoning, prior to subdivision control, and it's, you know, on a map of record, and it provides access to a number of properties. But again, we, you know, we're, as a Carver Planning Board, we can't control anything that happens in Middleborough or Plimpton.
Yeah, no.
And nor can, nor can they influence Carver.
No, that was more of a curiosity. I hadn't run across ancient way yet. Questions from the board? Seeing the... Yep, please.
So if I split that up on the middle, all right, so you're taking it out of the Green Business Park, because that's a residential area?
Correct. Well, no, no, again, you know, we have this deed, you know, if you look, if you read the deed, it would, it would refer to parcel 14, and parcel 14 would be a portion in Carver and a portion in Middleborough, and we want to eliminate that situation.
No, and I understand, but what I'm saying is the part in Middleborough is a residential area, right? Meaning like...
So we have, we have zoning data at the bottom right-hand part of the, so, so the zoning for Middleborough for that lot is residents are rural, so it's rural residential, correct? Carver zoning is Green Business Park.
I do have a question. So when that gets cut off, does that go to the town?
Well, no, they, I mean, I don't know what, if they have any intention, but, you know, but the land is the land, and, and for now, they'll still own it. You know, the new deed won't include it, and, you know, I don't, I don't know what their intentions are with that.
So the Green Business Park, that's why they're putting that big building in there, correct?
I'm, I'm not aware of what's going on on the property.
Am I mistaken? Is that where it's...
That's the zoning district.
Yeah.
That's the zoning. That's the zoning district for the Green Business Park, where we've had all these discussions about zoning changes and things like that.
So that's where that building is going, right?
No. There's no building on the property. They're splitting off lots.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
It was approved for building though.
It's the urban renewal zone, I think, is what you're referring to.
That's where all the RDA is focused its attention on.
Right.
Yes.
But what I'm saying is, if they're going to split the lot up, wouldn't that then require some frontage on that other piece of property?
Well, it says not a buildable lot.
Right. And when we approved the last one, we approved it as not a buildable lot.
Okay.
They can, no, they can come back to us later and put these lots together and make, create a lot that has, that is buildable.
All right, I just want to make sure.
So if I may.
Please.
In addition, if you look at the screen behind you, there's a signature block for the town of Middleborough and the town of Carver, and on the last one, there was a signature block for the town of Plimpton and the town of Carver. So after they're done here, and the board endorses the plan, they'll take that milar, and they'll go to the Middleborough and the Plimpton Planning Board meeting and do exactly the same process, and those boards will endorse the plan. And then it'll be something that they can record.
All right. Any further questions? All right, the board will accept a motion for, to approve map 35 lot 748, if I'm identifying it correctly, as approval not required and not a buildable lot, current.
I'll make second motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Ms. Sardillo, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
Mr. Gasky says aye. Correction, correction. Mr. Gasky says nay. All right, I don't agree with it.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Again, both passed four, four to one. Thank you very much for your time today.
All righty, we'll get the milars to you tomorrow.
I'd have somebody pick it up tomorrow.
That'll be fine. We'll get them endorsed at the end of the meeting.
Thank you very much.
All right, take care.
All right. Our next order of business is Jellystone Park Cranberry Acres, 20 Shoestring Road. Modification to Phase Two campsites.
Sorry. Okay.
Hello, everyone. I'm Dan Flores with SFC Engineering. If it's okay, I'd like to call into the owners. They want to be present. Unfortunately, they apologized they couldn't make it tonight. So I'll call in now and put them on speakerphone.
All right, so Dan, what I'm going to do is I'm going to give you the laptop, and you can drive and point things anywhere you like.
Hi, is this Shannon? Hey, Shannon, it's Dan. I'm here with the Planning Board.
Okay, hi, everyone.
Evening. You're going to have to put the microphone right up to that, so... All right. If you could just give us a little narrative?
Sure. Again, my name is Dan Flores. I'm with...
And I'm, I'm going to ask, I know it's tough, but this is going to be a lot closer.
The microphone's going to... Oh, okay, I got you.
You can pull the microphone right up.
Okay. My name is Dan Flores, thank you, with SFC Engineering. I'm here representing the owners, NGR Cape Cod. On the phone here is Shannon Sullivan. He's the President and Chief Construction Officer, Katie Hallgren, Director of Architecture, Planning and Design, and Kevin Odell, Project Manager. We're here tonight to gain approval for minor modifications for the Phase Two campsites that you have previously seen. We're also here to close out the conditions that are part of the approvals for the site plan review and special permit from February 22. And also, just to give a brief update on the project if you'd like. To start, I wanted to show you an overview of the, of the property. As you can see there on the screen.
Mr. Dion, on the other screen.
Thank you so much.
Perfect. I'm sorry, and you're Jerry with Vestacore.
Yep.
This plan shows the Phase Two area of the campground as the highlighted area. This is the area that we're changing. There's going to be 118 sites in that area. Overall, the campground was approved for 325 sites. This plan shows 300 total. There's also five sites that get relocated from the southern portion over near the, right here, these five sites here. And finally, the check-in booth is moved from way down here up towards, up in this area for a more convenient location for customers.
And I'll let you continue before I ask any questions.
So this shows a detail of the 118 sites for Phase Two, and I'll get into the reasons why and such, but to note here, we provided a second access. I don't know if you recall, but the previous plans had a single point of access up this hill, so we provided a second point of access. The wastewater treatment facility in this area is completely untouched, and really, the, the footprint in this area is about the same. The laundry building has been moved from this location over and is now 30 by 45 feet. The big change is with the grading, and I'll show that on the next...
I'm sorry, you said the building is now 30 by 45 feet?
Yeah, previous, the previous plans had shown it as 60 by 80. So here's a grading plan. Our intent here is to regrade what's being proposed in order to reduce overall impact. And with this change comes a change to the stormwater, which I'll get into, but the previous plan that you have seen had basically carried a 1.5% grade across the entire site area, essentially leveling that whole hill and clearing out all vegetation. The owners asked me to take a look at this and see if I can better match the existing grade with the intent of saving trees where possible and having a more nature-friendly sort of mesh better with what exists. And that's what you see here. This design allows us to cut the roads in first and then bring the sites off of those, again, to best match the grades that exist today. And some things that, that are shown on this plan in highlight are our, our stormwater approach. Given that we're going to be matching grades, we've incorporated some bio-retention areas, one of which will be right in the center here, and then another one down in this area for these sites. We're also using gravel pave and grass pave pervious technology to reduce our overall pervious, impervious footprint, and we propose some dry wells. A dry well for the building, and we have two locations that have dry wells that receive flow from the roads via deep, deep sump catch basin for pre-treatment. Our stormwater design allows us to meet all 10 standards of the mass stormwater. This also reduces peak flow for the required storms and reduces volume for all storms via infiltration. The, the utilities plan is also included. Yeah, I apologize. You can't see much here, but just, just to show that we're able to maintain the previous design intent of the water system, water lines coming through the site, as you've previously seen, and a collection system with super pipes that bring it all down to that central wastewater treatment facility. And that's, that's pretty much a summary on the change that we're proposing. Again, it's 118 sites. There'll be 300 total sites, and the whole point of this, again, was to avoid cutting off the entire top of the hill and instead trying to work with the grades as best as possible to preserve trees and create a more camper-friendly experience.
Have you filed with CONCOM in regards to the roadway, the change in roadway?
We have not.
Okay. Is it proposed gravel, or is it...
Correct, yes, gravel.
And the, because it, it seems it's in the 200-foot riverfront. Also, I wanted to make sure that all of the campsites within the 200-foot riverfront are graded to away from the river and to be contained on-site. But, Mr. Glines, have you had an opportunity to peer review these?
Andy Glines with Fussin' O'Neill, acting as the Town Civil Engineering Consultant. Not yet. I am familiar with the project from the original review, but I haven't done a full review of the submission documents for the minor modification yet. I may be able to provide some initial input tonight, but it depends on if there's any specific questions that the, the board has.
Do you have any questions from the board?
So that, that's a, a, a summary, sorry, of, of what we're proposing for the Phase Two area. Our other intent of being here is to close out the conditions that were imposed on the, on the approvals back in February, and I submitted a letter with this application package that includes a discussion of the conditions. And if you'd like, I can go through each one of these and describe how, how it's being addressed.
Yep, please. Although, Mr. Glines will, at some point, go over them at his leisure.
So condition number one was a detailed landscape and photometric lighting plan. The 14 set, 14 sheet plan set that we submitted includes sheets 9, 10, 11 that include landscaping for all areas, all campsite areas of the campground. The species that were picked are from the pollinating list from UMass Dartmouth. The lighting is addressed on this sheet as note number nine. That essentially says no lighting is proposed for the most part. So lighting note, the intent of the campground is to have limited artificial outdoor lighting in keeping with the camping experience. Outdoor lighting to be dark sky approved with full cutoff fixtures, existing lighting mounted on utility poles to remain. So again, the, the intent is to maintain a good camping experience. Any lighting is, is limited for walkways into the bathhouse. The, the next condition, number two, was elevations for all proposed buildings in additions so maximum building height can be verified. That's... That's actually the plan you can see on the other screen that was also submitted with the package. And I believe our maximum building height was 33 feet, so less than the maximum in the ordinance, the bylaws. Condition number three, zoning table showing proposed frontage, coverage setbacks, and maximum building heights. We've added that zoning table to this overview plan, sheet number two. Number four, confirmation from Carver Fire Department regarding adequacy of site access for emergencies and that road surfaces are properly compacted for fire equipment and vehicle outriggers and other fire protection measures that may be required. I personally been in touch with Jesse Boyle to discuss. He has stated that he's been in touch with town staff to resolve this directly. He was happy to see the additional access from the Phase Two area. Condition number five, show location of existing proposed onsite utility poles. And all of the poles that exist and that will remain are shown on this overview plan as well as any proposed, and actually, we have no proposed poles on this plan. Everything will be underground. Number six was a dumpster pad drainage detail. We've added that onto sheet number 10, which is the detail of the entrance area of the campground. Whoops. Basically, it's a stone trench to capture the runoff from the dumpster pad.
You gotta just grab the slides on the end and slide it right.
Yeah, it's a little.
There you go.
Number, number seven, verify extent of public right-of-way of Shoestring Road. We've included in our application package a plan of land prepared by Grady Consulting, dated October 9, last revised November 4, 2020, recorded at the registry. That plan depicts Shoestring Road as a private variable with right-of-way with the campground owning to the center of it.
Where does that begin?
All the way down.
If I may, I believe the entire length of Shoestring Road is private. At one point, there was some discussion about it being a public way. Folks assumed it was a public way. But in both the research that the abutters had done and the research that we did, we couldn't find anything in the town records that showed it had been accepted as a public way. So it's a private way.
Thank you. There was some confusion over whether it started at Tremont Street or at the river or so.
Starts at Tremont Street, goes out in the woods, and it's all private. Some's been improved, most past the campground is not just Woods Road to get access to other parts of other people's property.
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Please.
So does this also include the concern that the abutter to you had about the, somebody falling off of the road at this particular area and that you're going to be responsible for it?
Yeah, we did have a conversation with the abutter and the representative. They had indicated desire for a guardrail.
Right.
And the owners have agreed to that up to 30 feet in length.
So we should probably, that should probably be in the condition.
As well as added to the plan, if I may.
And currently, the water park is just in a preliminary phase and hasn't been approved by the board?
That is correct. There's a spot for it on the plan, but prior to the water park coming back, they're going to have to come back with a site plan specific to that that shows the buildings, the elevations, the use, the access to the property for people to get to, all those sort of things.
Questions from the board? So with regards to the campsite area, the Phase Two area, how much grading are we actually looking at?
There'll still be a good amount of grading. The design allows for more untouched area between campsites. See if I can get to that plan.
And are you, are y'all talking about building up or tearing or digging down?
It'll be a mix, actually. It's a bit undulating. There's actually some bowl areas.
Right.
So there'll be some fill areas and some cut areas. But again, we're trying to reduce that as much as possible.
Okay. If I may, John, I can weigh in on that as well.
Appreciate it.
Andy with Fussin' O'Neill. I did pull up the previous plans that were approved by the town, comparing them to the current grading approach. And I'd like to take a closer look, but based on what I can tell now, they're actually doing less cut than what was previously proposed. As the applicant mentioned, previously, there was designing for one consistent slope across the entire site, so they needed to cut a lot more material in order to do that. Now, it appears that they are creating more smaller subcatchment areas and mirroring the existing topography closer than what was previously proposed. So I guess I'd like to take a closer look at their stormwater approach to deal with the runoff from that. But, you know, at first assessment tonight, it looks like they're reducing the overall earthwork in this area.
Just as a point here, the previous plan had up to 12-foot cut.
Yep.
Now, maybe a two-foot here and there just to get a road in and then work off of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the board? Are you gonna probably need a little time to get an approved amended notice of intent from CONCOM in regards to the roadway?
Yeah, I had hoped that I wouldn't need that. But I guess we are, we do have additional impact in that area for the road. Okay.
And then, Mr. Glines, when do you feel would be?
I guess I, minor modifications, you usually turn around the comment letters quicker, but I would say I'd at least need a week to get a comment letter together, and I imagine there'll be some follow-up back and forth with the applicant and the ownership group. It's, if they want to continue for two weeks, that might be a little aggressive for us and the applicant to address everything. But it's, I leave that up to the applicant if they want to attempt to come back and have everything resolved for a vote in two weeks.
I'd like two weeks of work.
Okay.
I have a question.
Please.
Is Phase One up and running?
It's still under construction.
I have a couple of follow-up questions.
Sure, please.
Can you provide a little more information on why you're reducing the size of that laundry building? Is there use or storage that's no longer needed, or did you relocate that to somewhere else? I guess I just want to confirm that none of the other buildings got bigger.
Yep, no other buildings are increasing. Previously, that was, the idea was to have maintenance as well because it's right behind the maintenance area. They've eliminated that. And actually, that plan needs to be updated that you see there. It's now strictly laundry building. So that's basically the reason.
And looking at the landscaping plan, I guess it's sheet 11 of 14, I do see some proposed plant material, trees and shrubs there, but is there any existing trees that are being maintained there? I guess I don't see them called out on the landscape plan at the moment.
Yeah, which one is 11? That would be.
Landscape plan, Phase Two.
Okay. The nature of the site, it's all trees. I don't think it's practical to locate all existing trees. The intent here is that when you cut the road in, you're able to make the site fit as best as possible. There will be some cutting of trees, obviously, and we do show some replenishment in areas that seem likely. But again, the hope for the owner is really to maintain trees where he can. That's part of the business model.
The bylaw does call for 12-inch caliber trees to remain onsite if possible.
Yep.
You said you had to move the check-in area?
Yep. Yeah, the location today is out in front of the office area, which is actually quite a ways into the campground. See if I can find it here.
I thought that was the.
I thought that pushing it closer or farther out was part of the original plan.
It was. They've moved it a little bit further, and I just wanted to be transparent and show that to you.
See, there was some confusion as to the ownership of Shoestring Road at the time, and the town DPW was fairly confident that Shoestring Road was a town road up until the gates at that point, but that's been clarified at this point.
Well, yeah, I thought that they were building it off to the side so that the travel trailers, fifth wheels could pull off to the side while the campers went by.
Yeah.
Was it there with the people moving down the other end?
It was previously down in this area, proposed, and we've just moved it further up.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
It's on the crest of the hill now. It's a much better location.
Yeah, yeah, that's, yeah, where you previously had it, that's where I thought that it was.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, is that area going to remain gravel?
Yep.
Around the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Was that the second entrance right there?
No, this is an entrance to the existing 20 sites in here. Currently, there is not one at this location that's defined well. This allows now anyone coming into the campground can't get to anywhere other than passing through the gates, whereas now you're able to drive through this whole area without having any sort of gate to stop you.
You want to show them where that second entrance, that second point of access is for?
Sure.
That we've added to the site.
And you've moved campsites down to that area also, I see.
Yeah, on the outside of it. Okay, so here you can see, we now have a connection.
Stand for my benefit, could you make that scale a little bigger so we can see more of the plan?
Sure. How's that?
Great, thank you.
So there's the check-in building. We now connect down to the 20 sites in this location. It just gives a better flow to the campground itself.
So if I may, previously, that just looped back onto itself. So now there's two ways to get out of the park.
Any further questions from the board? Seeing none, the board will.
Does anybody, you know, this one, it's a minor modification, but I don't know if you wanted to take any comments of any.
Oh, yeah, of course, if there's anybody that would like to speak to this.
Any comments on your end, Shannon?
No.
Well, we just appreciate the board.
Hold that closer, please.
Trying to save as many trees and the existing topography, make the campground safer. That was our intent for the redesign, so we appreciate the board taking a look at it for us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The board will accept a motion to continue this to the July 26th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Dion, seconded by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mr. Robinson says aye.
Owen Sodillo says aye.
Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next item of business is a public hearing continued on the application of AD make peace. Company Beals &amp; Thomas requesting a definitive subdivision approval plan to the Carver subdivision control law for property located at off Wareham Street in Carver, in a residential agricultural district. The applicant wishes to construct a 370 linear foot roadway and cul-de-sac to support a two-lot conventional subdivision. I see the applicant has requested a continuance until 7:26.
That is correct. It's filed with the town clerk.
All right, is there anybody here who would care to make a public comment? Seeing none, I will, the board will accept the motion to continue the public hearing to July 26th at 7:00 PM.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none.
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Owen Sodillo says aye.
All right, public hearing. On the application of Bridgestone Continued, on the application of Bridgestone Development, Inc., requesting a special permit and site plan located at Lot 3 Ricketts Pond Business Park off Spring Street in Carver, Mass. In the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, the project will consist of the construction of two commercial buildings located at Lot Number 3 Ricketts Pond Business Park located off Spring Street. The lot will be comprised of two commercial buildings with associated driveways, parking areas, closed drainage system, septic system, and utility connections. Stormwater from the site development will be directed to infiltration basins designed to accommodate runoff from Ricketts Pond Business Park definitive subdivision.
Good evening, board members. Eric Schumaker, Mackenzie Engineering Group. Update since we last met, believe the last public hearing with the planning board was on June 14th. Since then, we met with the Conservation Commission and we received approval to build the portion of the parking area, dumpster pads, as well as the well within the 100-foot buffer to bordering vegetated wetlands. We made some slight revisions to the plan. I'll go through those quickly. So on sheet LA1, the landscaping plan, I took the advice that we spoke about last time regarding the perimeter landscaping, and I went through section 3242 of the zoning bylaw. I added a 22-foot landscape buffer, equivalent to the number of parking spaces on three sides of the parking lot, that being the north, east, and southern side. Some additional changes to the landscaping included a buffer of Emerald Green Arborvitis I provided along the rear of the property. That's the. Um, that's to screen, screen the use and prevent any sort of noise pollution. And the only other update, um, was the site walk that was scheduled, uh, with the planning board members, I believe during lots, uh, one and two. Um, the stakes for Lot Three were also out there on site, so I, I believe the board members had a chance to, to walk the site and get familiar with what we're looking at here. Um, other than that, we, we haven't received a review letter, so we, um, we really just took the advice from the last meeting and revised the plans. So I can answer any questions.
Sorry, um, you said you received some permissions from Conservation Commission?
Yes, they approved our notice of intent submittal. Um, so there's an order of conditions associated with that.
And, um, looking at your landscaping screen, um, can you tell me the extent of the landscaping from the edge of the property line in front of the buildings to?
Uh, I can, I can have that to mention out to, um, to give some more detail on that. But it's basically street trees spaced, I believe it's thirty foot on center, which is in excess. I, I believe the, uh, subdivision rules and regulations require forty feet. Um, so it's street trees, uh, we added a few extra in there and, um, I can get the exact measurement, uh, for the buffer provided along the front, uh-
Uh, the width of it, right?
Yeah, the width.
Because, uh, well-
But we believe we're complying with all of the, the landscaping sections of, of the zoning bylaw as far as perimeter landscaping as well as interior parking lot.
Was a waiver requested from the twenty foot street side?
Uh-
Did you landscaping?
Twenty foot street side landscaping?
The, the frontage, um, the screening, twenty foot requirement in there?
Uh, could you point me in the direction of the twenty foot requirement?
Uh, along Ricketts Pond Drive?
Yes, the, could you point me in the direction of the section of the bylaw that, that's required in? I, I did not see that.
Off the top of my head, I can't, but, um, I can certainly send it to you in the morning.
Okay.
Or after the meeting. Let's see.
The, the only thing, I reviewed this thoroughly, the landscaping, and the only thing I saw was perimeter landscaping on at least three sides and that's what I provided with the submission.
Right, uh, it might be, uh, oh, no. Thirty-two, thirty-three, but I'll, I'll, I'll get back to you and get a more definitive, uh, number for that on, for you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, I also see that, uh, what would be the hours of operation of this building?
Um, I, I can't speak to the use. Um, I'm here with the developer, Mr. Mike Ficini.
You, you'll have to approach the mic, sir.
Mike, Mike Ficini, uh, Bridgestone Development. Um, I, I think that based on the type of, uh, tenants that we're proposing to get into, uh, these two buildings would probably be seven to five, something like that. Seven AM in the morning till five o'clock at night.
Monday through Friday?
Yeah, for the most part. I mean, I can't guarantee that somebody won't come in there on a Saturday or Sunday, but I would, I would assume that most businesses, that we would, you know, we're looking for commercial type tenants, contractor based, things like that, that, um, most of those people don't work on the weekends.
Are these gonna be publicly accessible buildings?
Um, I mean, they're handicapped accessible and they certainly will be, yeah.
In, in the sense that a general member of the public can come in, go into the building, order or buy things and-
I, I don't believe that we're looking for retail. That's not what we're looking for.
Okay. From the, uh, the parking regulations, uh, for that type of building then puts, puts the parking, uh, to the rear, to the side, to the rear of the building, uh, out of, out of view.
Um, parking's along the front of the building. Um, the parking calculations are shown in a table on Sheet C one and we use the square footage that we predict for offices whereas warehouse storage. Um, and we required eighteen parking spaces. We provided twenty-two, so we're in excess of that requirement. Um, I believe on the legend sheet, uh, the first sheet submitted, uh, we requested a waiver to have parking located along the front of the building, similar to the Form A lot as well as lots one and two of, um, the Ricketts Pond Development.
Have, have you done any consideration to, uh, an alternate parking plan than what you've provided?
Um, we, we looked at it, we considered it. Uh, we wanted to keep the loading bays located to the rear, uh, rear of the buildings to provide some screening from R- Ricketts Pond Drive as well as, uh, the neighbors here that will be located across the street in the development.
As you know, the, uh, the board has expressed concerns in regards to the entirety of the subdivision and water quality and water issues, um. How, how are, how would you justify, uh, putting the well within the sixty-five foot no use buffer to us?
The, uh, the well was approved by Conservation Commission. Um, I believe it's a waiver. They said they grant all the time as far as well as being located in the sixty-five foot buffer. Uh, there's site constraints that go along with this. You need to offset a hundred fifty feet from any sort of septic system to your well and that was really the only spot in the lot that, um, a well could be placed and not have negative impacts to septic. As well as, um, trying to really forecast what we're doing. We're building each lot individually, so we need to give ourselves some space for the septics, um, that will be located to the, to the north. I believe Lot Five, Lot Four or Five. So that, that was the reasoning behind the placement of the well. It's, it really had to be placed there to, you know, avoid the septic system.
Do you know what the drawer is for these buildings with the expected, uh, water drawer is and-
Similar to the, the last buildings we discussed for lots one and two. Um, it's really not much, less than a single family home. There'll be a single sink for, uh, for the bathrooms and that's all we really predict here.
Because it's, it's a pretty sensitive area, um.
Monitoring well.
Yep, we, we will, uh, on, on the recommendation of our engineer, be, uh, requesting a monitoring well. And, uh, I personally, though I can't s- speak for the board, um, certainly would want to see, uh, at least a double row of ar- arborvitae's to, to screen, uh, from residential properties across the way.
Um-
I would, uh, I would consider, I would consider some sound deadening fence.
Or, yeah, that would work.
Some sound dampening fence.
That would work too.
Uh, given that you're proposing-
Sound and light.
Yep, we're, we're proposing sending, uh, or you're proposing having trucks, uh, come through there possibly on the weekend. Uh, the residents have dealt with enough, uh, noise and disruption to their lives for the last few years. And, uh, to be able to have to put up with this for the next, uh, uh, for the rest of their lives, um, I think, uh, at minimum, we're looking at some sound deadening, uh, stuff. But, um, beyond that, um, I think, uh, I think we really need to call into question, uh, this whole thing 'cause, uh, with regards to, uh, placement of the well and even looking at the placement of, uh, the end of this lot, you're, uh, you're encroaching into, uh, past the, the hundred foot buffer and into the sixty-five foot buffer, um.
We are not encroaching in the sixty-five foot buffer with any sort of pavement. Um, the well is the only, only thing located in the sixty-five foot buffer and that's been approved by Conservation.
Yeah, well, Conservation Commission, uh, uh, Mr. Germain has submitted a conflict of interest-
Right, we-
Disclosure form on that.
That aspect, but Conservation Commission looks specifically at the issues involved in, in conservation and water, but we have to look at not only the particular site plan, but the subdivision, uh, as a whole too. And, uh, that's something that we do take into consideration. And, and I believe the, uh, zoning bylaw oft- might be thirty-two thirty-one uh, in regards to twenty foot screening?
Yes, we're, we're in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District, so I, I don't see this district located on that table. So it, I believe the front property line section doesn't apply here.
Well, we did require sixteen feet on the other side of the street, so, uh, I, I don't see how that, uh, we can, we can do one and not do the other.
I, I believe it was sixteen feet because they didn't have it on at least three sides of the pro- of the property and we do in this, in this case, in this situation.
No, uh, no, they requested a waiver for it. I don't have that one on me, but-
Yeah, I-
I'll just look it up.
I'm, I'm not trying to argue here, but I know that the, the waiver was requested last time because they had it on two sides and the requirement in the zoning bylaw is at least three sides.
All right. Well, we do require screening, uh, of all parking areas and that should be able to be accomplished.
We believe we're providing adequate screening here.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I, um, we'll do, we, we've only provided verbal comments so far, uh, to this application. I have a draft, uh, review letter prepared, um, that unfortunately I wasn't able to finalize prior to this meeting. Um, but in that, I'll make sure I do a comprehensive review of the parking, uh, landscape requirements as well as the perimeter landscaping requirements. I'm, uh, trying to look through them now at the moment, but I don't want to, uh, misspeak just by, uh, um, reading too quickly. Um, but I, I understand the board's concerns regarding those items and, uh, I'll, um, have my memo thoroughly outline, um, you know, my assessment on, on what the requirements are for those sections.
All right. Uh, a couple of the things to, to take in consideration, um, is there a shortage of, uh, are there gonna be quantities of hazardous materials being stored on the property?
Not that we anticipate.
Uh, I would request a vermic control plan be fired, filed with the Board of Health. Uh, I would also, uh, would like to see birmingham and, uh, containment of the trash area. A monitoring well is, is, uh, would be on the condition, should it be approved?
I'd like to see water quality testing, uh, added to that prior to, uh, uh, construction.
And you're looking to put the propane tanks inside a protected area?
Um, the propane tanks are located in, um, the hundred foot buffer zone. Uh, that's correct. Those were also approved by Conservation.
And, uh, where, where, where's the area located for your snow removal?
Snow removal will be placed in the, uh, landscape areas adjacent to, um, the side property lines as well as, um, the buildings. Any, any sort of snow removal that can't be kept on, on site will be trucked out by a private contractor.
Probably must've seen.
Uh, any, any questions from the board?
No, I think you've covered it.
With regards, uh, I, I, go, go ahead, go ahead.
Mr. Williams.
I have more of a generic, um, question. A lot of these, uh, projects of tradesmen work centers, is there any, um, thought to putting in electric charging stations?
Um, the, we, we usually consider those. Uh, we don't think it's a, ha- would be appropriate, uh, for this use specifically, um, a tradesman and contractor. A lot of the times they drive larger pickup trucks as well as box trucks.
They're all going electric. You can buy your Ford F- one fifty with your phone, you know?
It's, it's something worth considering.
Well, now, I just think now it'd be cost more effective to put it in, in building, I think. Even if you put, even for a meter, I, I'm not sure how many charging stations are on Carver now. Um, you could make it any or two. It's just a, just a thought.
Would've been said about me.
All right, thanks. I, I just took a, a trip to Rochester, New York and back in electric car. It was an adventure. Fortunately, it's not my car, so it was an adventure.
No, that, that's a, that makes sense. It's a good point.
Also, uh, what about lighting on the backs of the building?
Uh, lighting will, uh, be wall pack lighting. They're not gonna exceed the fixture mounting height of eleven feet that your zoning bylaw requires for this type of building.
Okay, and what about as far as? And I'm, I'm thinking about the neighbors, uh, having to deal with the lights.
Which neighbors specifically?
The ones that are behind you?
Uh, we believe with the double row of arborvitae's as well as the existing trees adjacent to Ricketts Pond, that should block out any light. I've taken numerous site walks and I couldn't see any residential abutters from the property.
Because you couldn't see the abutters doesn't mean that light's not getting through there. Um, that, that's something that needs to be, um, looked at and addressed, uh, as well as far as, uh, taking care of any light pollution from, uh, I mean, going in there and throwing up a bunch of light and we're looking at putting in a bunch of light in this, uh, residential, in this, um, in this area for, um, for the, the site as a whole. Uh, it's a lot of light pollution that ruins the night sky for, for folks.
Yep, I mean-
And it, it's a quality of life issue for the abutters who have had no choice in this matter right now.
We can provide, uh, it's called dark sky compliant lighting if necessary, uh, that prevents light spill over onto adjacent properties. It's, it's, I believe it's a type of fixture that they use.
Could you point out where the septic system's going? Is it in front of the building?
Yep, so the Board of Health requires a minimum size septic, so, um, luckily we were able to put, uh, both buildings into one septic system and have it be economically feasible to do it that way. So it's gonna be, um, located in front of the southern building, uh, as shown in the plan.
Right, and that couldn't be moved to allow the well to be outside of a more, uh, into a less sensitive area?
Uh, we could move the well, uh, to the, to the north to get it out of the sixty-five foot buffer and into, um, really into the hundred. This was an issue brought up with Conservation as well and, um, it was decided that they would leave it where it is simply because of the planning for the lot to the north. We wanna give them space to have a septic as well as drainage, um, located where, where it's economically feasible to do so for them. There's an offset from catch basins, manholes, um, all of that as well in, in Carver, so we had to take that into account.
It's all one source, so I'm not sure how much that makes a difference.
And like we said, we're not anticipating much water demand with this one well, just, just a bathroom sink, toilet.
Mr. Chairman, if I can weigh in on the, the well, um, is there, um, a revegetation plan for the disturbance within the sixty-five foot, uh, wetland buffer for that work?
It's really, uh- Really, uh, a two-foot wide well, and, uh, I believe it was determined that they would allow us an access path, um, to the well, I believe ten feet wide. That, that was the extent of the discussion.
And I guess would that access path, could that be a lawn or, you know, vegetated?
Yep, that would be vegetated. It would be grass, real- really just a path to access the well and maintain any sort of water lines.
So I think, uh, you know, at a minimum, I think that'd be good to add that to the plans, just to clarify. Um, but I guess on the, um, some of the points that Jim made about, uh, relocating, uh, would it be feasible to relocate the well to the south side of the building where the, uh, radius would extend over the infiltration basin, which wouldn't restrict any future development from abutter lots, and you could move the septic in front of the northern commercial building?
I, I looked at that initially. Moving it to the south, um, puts it, you know, overlapping with the septic system. Uh, we have catch basins associated with the roadway. We need to avoid with the septic as well. Uh, I believe there's an offset with that. And I, I think there's also an offset, um, from the septic system to the infiltration basin. So it, it was really a juggling act here. Uh, I can look at that again, moving it to the south, uh, and see if that's feasible.
Also, the other question would be if the buildings were smaller, or there was only one building, would it be an issue?
Would, would the well location be an issue?
Yes.
Uh, we, we didn't do an alternatives analysis on that to, to see if the well would be feasible. No.
Any questions from the board?
Uh, sorry, Chair, um.
Please.
I guess, um, well, I'd like, I'll take a look at it, um, some configuration and setback requirements. Um, I guess I, I can work with applicants, uh, consultant to make sure they've exhausted the other options. Um, regarding, uh, Mr. Gasky's con- um, concerns about parking, um, I know it's been a, uh, item that's come up uh, on a handful of projects with parking along the, the front of the building. And for this particular project, um, currently, I'm, uh, recommending the waiver to have the parking in front of the building. Um, as the applicant mentioned, um, I agree that it's preferable to have, uh, separation from the pedestrian access points in the front of the building, and the loading bays, and the loading area, uh, in the back of the building, and to, um, have the bays, uh, out of, uh, sight from the, the front edge of the road. Um, I think the bays themselves would be, uh, better screened, um, on the, it's planned north, but it's really the, the east side of the lot, um, with the proposed plant material, um, the, uh, sound fence, which I agree is a, um, a good idea, um, based on the proximity to the pond, uh, and the natural, uh, existing vegetation that's gonna remain in place. And, uh, as the applicant's providing, um, and proposing, uh, accessible ADA compliant parking spots, um, it's best practice to keep those, uh, separate from the loading area, uh, and at the front of the building where, uh, they're closest, um, to the main access point. Um, but I, um, acknowledge the Planning Board's concerns with granting waivers for parking in, in front of buildings, um, and, uh, don't want that to get, um, out of hand in town. Um, here where it's just one, one row of parking and not a whole parking lot, where we have multiple, uh, rows, I think it'd be, um, more within the realm of, uh, um, where the board should grant a waiver. So that's my, um, uh, assessment that I'll, I'll write up in the, the formal letter as well, but I just wanted to mention it now in case, uh, John had any follow-up comments or questions on, on that aspect.
Yeah, uh, uh, last thing to talk about was, when we were out there on the sidewalk, there was a significant grading that still had to be done, uh, to what was out there. And looking at what we've got going on here, whatever grading you do is going to essentially remove any up slope and leave it for a complete down slope, uh, going to the pond. So, a- and you're, you're gonna, i- it's gonna be removing a significant amount of the vegetation that's there. So this is where, and this is where I, I start to have some of the real problems, uh, going on, because we were, we were presented with a lot that, or with a setup that, uh, the buildings weren't even, um, fully on the graded lot. So there's gonna be a significant amount of, uh, material, uh, that's, that still needs to be removed, uh, from this whole thing, and, uh, that's gonna leave a, uh, nothing but a down slope going to the, uh, going to the, uh, wetland area. So, uh, uh.
I, I can speak to that a little bit, if you'd like. So the grading associated, um, with the infiltration basin, in order to establish the berm required, as well as, um, the grading in the roadway, those were approved in that initial notice of intent, um, submitted for the definitive subdivision back in two thousand and eighteen. So the grading to the rear of the lot has not changed, um, since that approved submittal and the order of conditions associated with the infiltration basin, as well as the roadway. Um, so our roadway here, the grades established, um, with the roadway, we really just grade onto our lot with that. So we're, we're trying to create a condition where stormwater won't spill off from Ricketts Pond Drive and enter this development, Lot Three. Um, so we have a slight slope into, into the development, and that's really how we establish the grading for this lot.
All right, well, I wasn't a member of that board, and I really have issue with taking that much more out and being presented, being presented with this, and the grading's not done. Uh, I don't know. Not sure.
All right, this is a public hearing, so, um, is there anybody here in the audience that would care to please? Gentlemen, I will have to ask you to, thank you very much for your time.
Dorothy Pollitt, One Fifty-Eight High Street. I am the abutter, um, and I can tell you first-hand that I can see all of the activity, um, as most people know, from my back deck. Um, I can see their trailer lights on at night. I can see when they start in the morning. I can see when activities are, vehicles are driving out there at night. The reason I came forward tonight is because of a couple of things. It seems though McKenzie Engineering has a total disregard for the wetland zoning bylaws. The pond right now is drying terribly. It is in bad shape. The wetlands next to it is also, the vernal pool is almost gone. I understand that there is a drought going on, but I've lived there for forty years, and it's never, even in August and September, been this low. So something has definitely changed. Um, you have the Horstley report. I also had, um, Ibis Environmental come to my property, and he and I observed the vernal pool and the Rickards Pond, and, um, forty years ago, it was Rickards Pond. Now it's Ricketts Pond. Um, same pond, however. And his suggestion was a barrier wall between the industrial park and the wetlands, one hundred-foot wetlands zoning area, a barrier wall to protect the endangered species' access to the industrial park. He said that if they were not able to afford, like, a concrete stone barrier wall, that there is a vinyl clad chain link fence, and he said, uh, this man is like seventy-two years old, and he specializes in environmental sciences, and he works rather local. Um, he still is on Conservation Commission on one of our nearby towns. Um, he said, what you, what they do is they ba- bury a foot underground of this vinyl clad fence, and it protects all the endangered species, the red bellies and the boxers that used to be there, from entering the industrial park, and he suggested it all along the border, the hundred-foot, uh, wetlands marker. Um, I am quite certain that McKenzie Engineering is smart and competent enough to abide by our zoning bylaws. There's no excuse. Um, when this company, the same gentleman, was before the Conservation Commission, the point was brought up about the well-being within the sixty-five feet. And we had Dr. Horstley's, um, hydrology report about the water table in this area that supplies the aquifer. And, um, he was told, the engineer from McKenzie was told by, um, the chair, that all he had to do was submit a letter in that they would approve it, being within the sixty-five feet. Prior to the member of the Conservation Board saying that, the engineer said that he could look at it and move it. It wasn't a big problem. But when the Conservation Commission told him just to write a letter that they give permission for everything and have only declined one thing, and it's all video recorded by this, uh, Area Fifty-Eight, and you can, you can watch the meeting. So I think that because the pond and the wetlands are in jeopardy, we need a wall. If we have to go on the cheap side, the, um, vinyl clad chain link fence. Um, I agree with Mr. Gasky about the double arborvitae's to provide sound and lighting, um, barriers. We have a lot of people that can see that pond from their homes. Um, if you're at the site and you can't see me, it doesn't mean I can't see you. Um, thank you for listening. Thank you for helping us, the neighborhood, have a barrier between the industrial park and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public? Would you care to speak? We will be awaiting your report, so, um, we will be continuing the public hearing. Is there a particular time, you think?
I'll be able to issue these comments this week. Um, I ju- I just need to QC the, um, uh, draft memo that I currently have prepared with my team.
All right, so, um, Mr. Bott, your recommendation?
Um, the next meeting is July twenty-sixth. I would venture to say continue then. If we're ready to go, we'll go then. If not, we'll post a continuance and roll it back, uh, to the next meeting.
Works for us.
All right, seven twenty-six. Comment letter out this week.
The Chair will accept the motion to continue the public hearing for Ricketts Business Pond, Lot Three, to July twenty-sixth at seven P.M.
I'll make that side motion.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson.
Seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Sardillo. Thank you very much. Um, we'll see you then.
Thanks for your time.
Votes, votes. Oh, sorry. Yep. Any discussion from the board? Mr. Dehaan.
Mr. Dehaan says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sardillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next order of business is, on the appli- application of ProleO Concrete Forms Inc., requesting a site plan review. Uh, this is apparently a public hearing, but I don't have a public hearing notice, Mr. Bott. Our next order of business is, public hearings. In accordance with the provisions of the Town of Carver zoning bylaws, the Carver Planning Board will hold a public hearing July twelfth, seven P.M. in Carver Town Hall, Meeting Room One, on the application of ProleO Concrete Forms Inc., requesting a site plan review pursuant to sections twenty-two, thirty, and thirty-one hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at Zero Forest Street in Carver, Assessors Map Forty-nine, Lot Sixty-two dash seven dash R, in the General Business Zoning District. Applicate- applicant proposes the construction of a single commercial building, associated utilities, stormwater control, parking lots, and access drives. The building will be used as a craftsman tradesman building. Any persons interested in wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. A copy of the plan of, is on file at the Planning Department and may be reviewed during normal business hours. Could you please identify yourself and give us a little narrative?
I'm Glenn Priolo, the applicant for Zero Forest Street.
Glenn, can you lean into the mic a bit so our recorder can hear that at home? Thank you.
Glenn Priolo, applicant for Zero Forest Street for a seventy-two-hundred square foot commercial tradesman building. Contract is bays. We're asking for a few waivers on, because of the lot shape. I apologize, my engineer usually does this, but he's been laid up with a broken leg for five weeks, so if he couldn't come, so I'm gonna give you a rundown on what we have. The, um, the building, we're asking for a lot of the same waivers as the last guy because of the shape of the lot. Oh, sorry, we're asking for, you know.
You don't have to lean into the public storage unit.
Okay, yeah. The, uh, the shape of the lot requires front parking, mainly because we, we got the same fact that we were gonna have bays in the back, contractors bays. It's a, it's a long lot, and it's elevated a lot, and the elevation change is about twelve feet over it. So we put it out to- towards the front of the lot to make it work best with the lot, and we were requesting a parking in the front and a landscape variance for a ten-foot buffer instead of twenty, mainly like, just because of the place we had to place it in the lot to make it work. We, we went a lot of different ways trying to make it sideways and everything, and the parking just didn't work, and the bays, so. Basically, this is what we came up with. We tried to meet, we made stormwater, everything, we seemed to meet all of that. The waivers we were asking for were the landscape waivers, and the, one of them was the, the driveways. Both, both driveways on the abutment properties, which are all commercial, and across the street is commercial, are pinned to the, to the property lines, and we want an access so we can drive around the building, so we're not trying to back trucks and everything out onto Forest Street. So like I say, we're, we were looking for that waiver to be able to swing around the building and come out the other side, just mainly for just convenience, because everything's getting delivered with tractors now. Not that we have that many deliveries, but there are, everything that seems to come, comes on tractors.
All right, uh, I know we had concerns with the property next door and the fact that it's on a blind corner. Were you proposing larger articulated vehicles on this site?
Well, we're just running into a lot, just with, with deliveries nowadays, most things are coming on tractor trailers. So we tried to make it so that these tractors can go in and out without, you know, causing any traffic problems on Forest Street. We're down, you know, we're far, we're far enough away from the corner, and when, you know, we're past the lot, the next lot that's gonna be developed, so we believe the sightline's not bad there.
There's, there's two blind corners actually at the top of the hill, uh, which, which had raised concerns with us. Um, also the turning radius of a tractor trailer in regards to the, the side, size of Forest Street. I see you're putting a gravel parking lot in back?
Correct.
I, I can't tell from your plans here, is that a fifty-foot setback back there from the residential district?
Yeah, there's a fifty, there's a fifty-foot setback. Twenty-five of that's gonna remain, the pines that are on site, and it's pretty wooded. It's a wooded lot now, so, um, it's undeveloped. So the septic, the septic is in that fifty-foot, because that's where, that's where it was perked.
The, the, the problem is that that fifty-foot has to provide screening for the residential area from visual and audio intrusion, and it's gonna require an extensive amount of landscaping to, to accomplish that. That's why I have concerns with the, the field back there. Um, and, and why do you feel, uh, you need a, a waiver from the twenty-foot required, uh, street frontage?
Just the way we had to set the building forward, just because the elevation on the lot. The lots, the elevation change is about twelve feet going up that, that lot. Turning the building sideways, it makes it for a tough building to, to work, so we wanted to move it. We turned the building sideways, put the parking in front and the, the bays in the rear. Back to the septic, we're gonna leave twenty-five feet behind it of the woods that is there now, and we have room in front to plant too, so we still should have an adequate buffer there. And it'll be, it won't be touched with the fifty-foot.
I have a question.
Please.
Um, was a traffic study done in that area?
No, he just went off of standard information and, um, like I say, all his in- information indicates that it's not gonna be a big impact to that traffic on that road for what we're gonna use it for, because it's contractors' bays, you know, it's not a revolving door. You know, it's usually people going in in the morning and people going out at night, and then, you know, whatever deliveries you get. I do construction, I do subdivisions, so we just get deliveries, so it's mainly our part would be mainly for deliveries. And that's why we're trying to access the lot and loop around so we don't have trucks backing out onto Forest Street or, you know, Main Street.
It, we wouldn't allow, that's prohibited anyways. Uh, now, is there a retail building associated with this?
No, there'd be office space in con- contractors' bay, so there'd be, the front of the building would be just office for whoever has the contractors' bay in the back.
Well, the way that the building's oriented, the front contains all, all of these, so are you saying the largest space is proposed for office space?
No, no, it's only a fifteen-foot office in the front and one good-sized office for ours on the right-hand side. But the majority of it is just storage base and work base.
Will the public be accessing this, uh?
Not unless they were coming to, you know, speak with one of the contractors or one of the tenants.
Because it, if it's a publicly accessible building and there's other landscaping requirements, do you think you'd require all the variances if the building wasn't so big?
I think no matter how we look at that lot where it's elevated so much, trying to put a building sideways on that lot is tough where we're coming off. That's the steepest spot coming off of, down onto Forest Street from those lots. We're on the lower side of the hill and it elevates up from there. Like I say, it's a twelve-foot difference. And we're still looking to provide a landscape buffer just, you know, from twenty to ten on the front and I think ten to nine on the sides.
Now, um, we do require a, a seventy-five foot, distance between curb cuts for safety reasons. Uh, you don't think a, a reorientation of the building would allow for singular curb cut in regards to this?
I think a singular curb cut can be done with the building as-is, but it just makes it so your traffic and your deliveries and everything, you're not, you're not getting around that building. I mean, you could put a real small building in there, but it's not, it just, you can't access it. And coming out onto Forest Street at that point's a little toughy. And both, both buildings beside us have their driveways right on the property line, so we would have to put it dead center.
Snow removal?
Snow removal, I mean, we'll have plenty of, um, space in the back of the lot. It's gravel. We can, we can plow through the back of the lot. We have drainage and adequate infiltration to, it's all calculated for a hundred-year storm. I mean, my engineer would go over all of this stuff with the, with the peer review engineer, because that's more his, you know, thing, though we do. He does say it meets everything with the DEP stormwater.
Is there any plans on storing, um, trailers or vehicles on site?
No.
One of my, my, a couple of my biggest concerns are gonna be, um, the curb cuts, uh, the front screening, and, uh, issues on safety in regards to tractor trailers and, uh, whether they should be limited or not due to, uh, the two blind corners on the road and the fact that the road isn't the widest road. And the intersection at the bottom of the hill isn't particularly great and was made for more of a residential issue. I'm just telling you my concerns.
Yeah.
Are there any questions from the board?
I do have a question, Mr. Chair. Um, bathrooms, uh, are there gonna be bathrooms in each individual bay?
Yes.
Or, okay.
Yeah.
Bathroom and sink?
Bathroom and sink, yeah.
Questions? Mr. Glines?
Uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Gatski.
I'm, I'm sorry, so, uh, you've got what, eleven spaces marked on, on the site?
Yes, um, no, we got eighteen parking spaces, no, twenty parking spaces.
I, I apologize, uh, on the front, on, on, on the front, you got?
Oh, on the front, yeah, yep.
Um.
We got six in the back.
So.
It's really to accommodate people just coming and dropping off and whatever from the front of the building.
So at this point, we're not, we're not able to prove, to approve any more than eight.
Okay.
According to thirty-three forty-one A. Would that, uh, would that cause, would that cause issue?
As long as we have something in the front just for, to, to utilize the front of the building, and then we can, we can sell it. We have plenty of room for parking out back.
Okay.
It's just not enough to, for like off-street parking, if people are just dropping off. We don't want them back there if people are coming and going with their, with their truck.
Did we discuss, is there any manufacturing that's gonna be happening on?
Um, not manufacturing. I mean, we do subdivisions, so one of my biggest things is just to have a shop, because we, we, we put cabinets together and this and that, just a woodworking shop.
Right, a tradesman shop.
Yeah, tradesman shop, that's, that's all we're looking for there.
Okay, yeah, all right.
Andy Glines with Fussin O'Neill. Um, we haven't begun our review of this, uh, application yet. Um, so, uh, as, um, always, we'll, uh, conduct our review and issue a, a formal comment letter to the applicant, uh, and ownership, uh, group. Um, at the moment, um, flipping through the plans tonight, nothing, um, that the board hasn't already brought up, uh, has jumped out at me, so.
Did, uh, I didn't, I failed to see, did, did you, uh, go through, uh, with the fire department? Have they reviewed as well?
I, I spoke to Jesse and he, he said he liked the idea of having the two entrances. He says that's best for them and that's best for everybody in this situation, because kind of alleviates the traffic problem, because even on a blind corner, we're going in and we're going out. We're not, you know, trying to get off the street into a parking lot, you know?
Now, were you, were you intending on making those one-way, um, cutouts?
Yeah, I would say it would come in the farther, the closest to Main Street and go out up the hill, you know?
Okay. And, uh, you had, uh, how many, um, trucks do you anticipate, like, per day? Because I, I, I live a, I live in that general vicinity. I know how bad fifty-eight is.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't anticipate, like, it's not like we're in a business where we're like getting deliveries every day. Everything goes to the job site. When we're getting something, it's something we're gonna be working on at the shop, you know?
Okay.
And like, and if, you know, like I have an, say, an electrician interested in a contractor's bay, he'd, he'd be getting a delivery with a box truck and then, you know,
Right.
he'd stock his building and they'd be just going in vans during the day, you know?
Okay.
So I don't anticipate a heavy volume of traffic there.
Okay. Yeah, that's, one of the concerns is the, especially during the business hours when everybody's trying to get out to go to work and come home from, from work and everything else. Uh, being that it is a, it, it, it's a pretty tight street.
It's a tight street.
You've been there.
At least you have the option of going right or left to get out, you know, so that's one thing that helps there too, you know?
You mentioned eighteen-wheelers?
I'm saying a lot of deliveries come in tractors, so I never know what they're, like, if we get a delivery, we don't know what's gonna come in.
Yeah, because a lot besides it, we actually, uh, regulated him for many deliveries on eighteen-wheeler.
But he has one access, right? And he's, doesn't, he's, he doesn't?
Wasn't even just the act, well, the one access, uh, the street, because not only fifty-eight, but just one piece of property, far dropped, there's another intersection right there,
Mm-hmm.
which was pretty bad when we were there doing a sidewalk on the first.
Right.
And same thing, he asked for the waivers for the, uh, the front there. Um, I can't see Grant knew that access, where we didn't allow him. So I would have a little conflict of interest there with Grant knew something for an eighteen-wheeler that we wouldn't let him have, you know?
Well, I mean, I can, I can.
Side-by-side property.
I can understand your point, but I think it's a, it's a different scenario when you can come in a marked entrance and you have enough room on the lot to completely turn around and bring a truck out, so you're, you're looping a.
You ask him for a waiver for that.
Right, yeah. But you, you are, like I say, I don't think the two, the two lots are like apples and apples, you know?
You ask him for a waiver, you know, uh, and that's the reason you're asking for the waivers for that condition.
Yeah, and the fact that I have a driveway pinned to both, both property lines, so I'm trying to make the lot accessible. You know, I mean, it's just, that's, that's my point. I think they're two different, they're two different scenarios, because his lot's narrow and he's proposing a building that if you bring a tractor trailer in, there's no way you're either, you're either backing that truck in or backing it out. This lot, the way we're designing it, you can safely access it, loop around the back of the building. All our deliveries would be in the back, anything we had there, and we can loop out to, back out to Forest Street.
And, and you feel that a tractor trailer can turn off that property in either direction of crossing into opposing lanes of traffic?
We already did the calculations. We have plenty of room on that lot, you know, so they have a program to do that.
You could take a right turn out of that property on Forest Street and you feel?
As long as we make the driveway wide enough, but I can take, I can, I can come out of Plymouth Street with my tractor trailers, because I have trailers too. I have another shop in Kingston where I keep my equipment. I can come out onto Plymouth Street and I have to go into a frozen lane with a truck. That's pretty common everywhere, you know?
Well, it shouldn't be.
Well, but it's just.
It's a very poor safe, safety perspective. All right. Uh, do we have any further questions? Um, well, it's a public hearing, so is there anybody here in the public that would care to speak on, in regards to this?
I'd like to speak.
Please.
Hi, Judy Richards. I live on Lilian Way. I'm kinda here to alleviate some of the issues we've had with the building on Two Lilian Way, Nutrien. And now Mr. Prioli wants to put a building, and we also have another lot of land that there's a gentleman who wants to put a building on the, closer to the corner of Fuller Street. So these are my questions. First of all, the site plan application shows under units, and it has a zero there. When I looked at the plans, it looks like it's gonna be a sixty by a hundred and sixteen-foot building with five bays. One of them is gonna be partially office. Um, there is no rendering on the buildings for the heights to see where they asked for a second story. What's gonna be on the second story? Is that storage? Or are those gonna be offices or lofts? Um, the whole frontage and sign requesting for the trucks to get around, and I get it. I would rather see a tractor trailer go around the building, um, only because Nutrien does have tractor trailers deliver there. I've seen them, and they have a difficult time getting in and out because of the, the land on the side. Mr. Prolio's building is gonna be right next to him, and looking on the plans, there's only seems to be twenty-six feet from the boundary over to the corner of the building. And I don't know radiuses of trucks or not, but if he proposed on the plans, they were only gonna put like Leyland spruce on the, cypress on the side there. How are they gonna get the plants in, the driveway clearing to get around the building? Um, the Abutters in the back on Anne Way, I don't see any of their wells. Like, where are their wells in relation to where Prioli's well, looks like it's ten feet off the back of the building, and the septic is in by the Abutters property. So where are those Abutters wells? That should be taken into consideration. Um, I know they still have to go through a lot of other permitting. I mean, I have a lot of questions that I saw just quickly looking at the plans over the last couple of days, and I can only see them online. I never saw a MyLaw copy, but there's some issues. And the only reason I'm bringing this forward is we don't wanna go through all the stumbling blocks that we went with the other buildings. They wanna get their business off and running. The residents want the construction over and done with quicker. But there is still, I know they have to go through a lot of other things. Um, and what was it? The, the retaining wall? I guess it's gonna be on the, you know, the southwest side of the building, where if you're looking at the building, it's by on the left. There, again, there is no landscaping or anything presented there. So I think we should look a little deeper into this, and I know his engineer wasn't here tonight to go through all the nooks and crannies of their request, but, um, and the other thing, our operation, if this is a tradesman, craftsman building, are we limiting it to, I know they arrive sometime at five, four in the morning to get their equipment and leave. It's, it doesn't sound like it's gonna be busy and crazy banging over there if they're just tradesman craftsman building. And the other question is, are they gonna build these out as storage units so that vendors can leave their products there to take and ship out?
It, it, uh, thank you. Um, it shouldn't be used as warehousing. No, that's, that's not allowed, craftsman tradesmen.
Right, and I know there's no service station, service repair, all the other things listed as of now under tradesman craftsman buildings.
Now, you have some very valid points, and I noticed you were writing furiously, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience? So you got a lot on your plate for the next two weeks, and we
Always.
we're gonna have to do a, a, a sidewalk and, um...
I, I would, um, recommend that applicant continue for two hearings. It would give us a chance to complete our review, issue a comment letter to them, and potentially have them issue a response to comments before coming back to the board. Um, but again, I, you know, defer to the applicant if they want to, um, provide some additional information to the board or Abutters um, at the next meeting, but.
It's, it's up to you.
Yeah, I mean.
You're welcome to.
It's really.
Um, I would, I would highly recommend you listen to him to give you guys time to sort everything out.
I think we can sort stuff out on our end, because he's gonna be back, he's back for the next one. I just had to fill in for this one. But he, um, I think the concerns that, I'm sorry, I don't know the name, but this lady had, I mean, they were all stuff that we can address. I mean, there is, there is plantings on that side.
I'm sorry, I don't know the name, but this lady had, I mean, they were all stuff that we can address. I mean, there is, there is plantings on that side. The twenty-six-foot, um, sideline is at the building, and the building's back fifty feet off the property, so that landscape area can be made to a size that trucks can turn out when we do get out there, you know, I mean, we can, we can have more space at the road. We're not the building, the twenty-six, we're not tied to that all the way out to the street for turning onto, to turning onto Forest Street. The elevations, it's a, it's an eighteen-foot high building. It's not like we're going to put a high building. There's one, there's one little portion that's gonna have like some storage upstairs on my side, you know?
And Mr. Chair, if I could, I would like that clearly marked out when we go see the sidewalk.
The building itself?
Not, not necessarily the building, but the turning in.
Yes, the-
So we can take care of-
Both of the curb cuts, uh, as well as the, the building, um, when we do our sidewalk and, um, somebody just mentioned. Ah, well, I, I forget now, but I'm sure I'll get back to it. Um, do you wanna, uh, arrange a sidewalk now or in, okay, uh, any particularly favorable-
I think it's been everybody's concern on the board, the driveway.
All right, um, how long do you think it will take your engineer to stake out the entrances and the various other, uh, aspects in regards to this property?
He could do that next week. We have it on the GPS, so.
All right. Are there any twelve-inch caliper or larger trees on the property?
Mostly just tall scrubby pines. I mean, there's not a lot to it. Most of it would be gone, except for that buffalo one would be replanting, you know? Sorry about that. Gotta talk to this thing.
All right, um, so next week, you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, we have the, we have the plan on GPS, so we can mark out the entrances or whatever you, whatever you guys want. Marked out, we can, we can have it there anytime you want.
A good day for everybody, Tuesday at noon?
Good evening, you're welcome.
E- evenings, right?
I'm fine with any evening.
It's still daylight till about seven o'clock, so.
Wow. Yeah, but you know, my second job starts at six o'clock at night, so. Um-
I know, I'm sorry.
Some of them are difficult, cause they work at night.
Right. Is there a, a, a night in particular that's best, or would like a five o'clock be preferable?
That would be, uh, cutting it close.
Do we think we could do a four-thirty?
No, I couldn't do it.
No, that's, yeah, you got work.
The twelve o'clock sidewalks aren't too popular with the gentlemen.
I'm very popular with them, um-
The option of everybody else, you know? I mean, I did like-
Would it, would it be-
It seemed like everybody was all right, and I guess it smells good. So we'll, we'll do, do it, we'll try.
That works for me, but I want you all to-
Well, Kevin mentioned evening too, and, and, um, Mr. Gatski.
I'm open to both, though.
If we were to schedule it for next Tuesday, what would be a good time for you?
Next Tuesday, um, I can not guarantee anything. I, I don't know what my worst-
Is there a day that you have?
Uh, there is no good day.
All right, then, if Tuesday at noon is okay with everybody, who'll go with that?
I will endeavor to make it as best I can. If, if I'm unable to make it on Tuesdays, or would there be, uh, or Tuesday at noon, uh, would there be, uh, an opportunity to come by, uh, later in the evening?
Oh, absolutely. It'll be marked out and everything there, and if you wanted me to meet you there, I can meet you there too. I mean, it's-
You wouldn't need the engineer there for, for that. It'll already be marked out.
Yeah.
Do you, um, so, just so I know what you guys want marked out? You want the two entrances, anything else?
Uh, the major features, the building, um-
Location of the well.
Yeah, location of the well.
Septic. Uh, septic or?
Yeah, and of course, the, uh, the property lines.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd, um, also recommend having the limit of clearing, um, along the west side. Um, yeah, you'd be able to approximate that based on where the septic is installed, but I think it's important to know what amount of the existing vegetation's gonna remain along that, that western edge.
Yes, if we lay out, we lay out the septic, we'd be, we'd keep it tight to the five-foot over dig and just, you know, but just leave everything from there back.
So, as, as long as that's, you know, discussed during the sidewalk, you get a feel for uh, what the density of the existing vegetation is when you're actually standing on that clearing limit.
Okay, so, um-
If, if he, if he marks out the septic and then on the plan says that, you know, clearing's gonna be five feet off the edge of the septic, then, you know, you wouldn't necessarily need extra flags for that, but I just wanna make sure that's clear to the board members when they're on site.
Yes, and, uh, the fifty-foot mark from the rear property site from the residential.
I mean, no, I think with Tuesday, I mean, marking the building and the entrances and everything with the GPS-
Would Tuesday be better?
Well, it's wooded. I'm saying getting that marked back there. I might have to get the engineer out there if you just want the whole property lines and the back septic and everything, cause I don't know if we're gonna be able to pick it up in the woods, you know? It is pretty dense. I mean, I can call him and find out if it, if it works. I mean, we can shoot for Tuesday.
Yeah.
Then we make it work, so I'm just saying, if you want all that, I'd rather him come out and just mark it, you know?
Okay.
Cause he can do it with his total station then.
Should we push it off till Thursday, then? Give you a couple more days?
Yeah, give me Thursday.
All right, Thursday at noon?
Okay, all right, Thursday?
Please, Mr. Bot.
I will, uh, have Mr. Prioli confirm that things are set up on site with staff and let you know that-
Thank you very much.
For the nineteen.
Yes.
Yeah.
But we're shooting for Thursday?
Huh?
But we're gonna shoot for Thursday?
Right, again-
Thursday, the twenty-first, no?
The board's very flexible, so.
So at noon is a hard no.
On, on Thursday, yes, but you'd be, maybe swing by in the evening?
I could definitely swing by in the evening.
Okay, and then I would check with Mr. Bot to see if, uh...
We'll let everybody know. We'll have the staff send out a note that says we're on for the site visit-
Yep.
For the twenty-first.
Yeah, we have no problem getting that. That's, that's just, you know?
Excellent.
Motion to continue?
Motion to continue to, uh, and we haven't set up a date. I think we were-
And you wanted to.
Sure.
August, August ninth is that?
All right.
Date.
The board will accept to motion to continue the public hearing for Prolio Concrete Forms Inc., um, to August ninth at seven PM.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second it.
A motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Mr. Dion. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Thank you, Mr. Prolio. All right. Let's see. Um, we have, uh, site plan review?
Yes, if I may. Uh, so, uh, these next two items, uh, are the site plan vote for lots one and lot two. Previously, the board had approved the special permits, but an oversight by staff, we'll call it me, uh, didn't say, oh, we should vote the site plan as well. So this is sort of a housekeeping measure, uh, to vote the site plans. Uh, we typically vote them separately.
Yeah.
Uh, so we've got the, uh, the subdivision, uh, special permit approved at our last meeting, and the site plan decision essentially brings all those, uh, uh, requirements for the site plan, uh, onto a separate decision. Uh, you've looked at it, uh, Andy's looked at it, and so it's just a, sort of a form, uh, just a, a, a form of just voting the site plan that you already voted the special permit for.
All right, um, the board will accept a motion to approve the site plan for Lot One Ricketts Pond Business Park with all associated
Conditions.
Conditions as the site plan.
Special permit.
Special permit, thank you.
I'll make said motion.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made by Ms. Sodillo, seconded by, um, Mr. Dion. Discussion? All right.
Mr. Dion says aye.
Sorry, I'm not over to you. It's, uh, it's, uh, it was actually updated again today or yesterday?
Yeah, I got comments back from you and Andy today, so, so.
Did we not, uh, go with a, either a monitoring well or water testing?
It was updated today, uh, to include, uh, watering well, um...
If, if I may, the-
Okay, yeah, all right.
The comment I made was, um, just to clarify the location of the monitoring well installation, so.
Okay.
Minor.
Sure.
All right, uh, John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Five zero zero, very well, thank you. And lot two?
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna hold on just one moment. I, I believe we lost someone, so.
Yeah, Rich voted aye on lot one.
On the original one, yes. So we're moving on to lot two, but we'll just give him-
Okay.
A minute to finish his business.
All right. So if I can put you guys to work while you're here, uh, this is the decision for one, for the special permit allocated sign, and, uh, for, for the site plan and for the special permit, cause we haven't signed it.
Lot one?
For lot one. So, actually, you, yeah, that was five zero. So that's special permit, that is site plan, okay, lot one.
All right. All right, our next, uh, order of business is, uh, site plan review, lot two Ricketts Pond Business Park.
This sounds amazingly similar to what we just did.
No, I'll take those, John.
Oh, no, you're right. Yes, please, continue, Mr. Gatski.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Bot, please continue.
Uh, a- as I said before, uh, once again, a housekeeping matter. We should have voted the site plan and the special permit at our last meeting. I neglected to make sure we voted the site plan, so. Uh, this is the, uh, site plan decision that's been reviewed by, uh, Chair and by, uh, our consulting engineer, and prepared by the plan.
All right, um, the, the board will, uh, accept the motion to approve, uh, lot two Ricketts Pond Business Park, um, site plan with all associated uh, conditions of the special permit.
I'll make that said motion.
And I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Uh, any discussion among the board? Seeing none? Mr. Dion?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
And if you, if I may, could you just, uh, say again who made the motions for lot one and the second? I didn't cap-
Lot one was Kevin and-
For lot one, K R?
Let me second it.
Yeah.
And?
Mr. Robinson made the original motion and Mr. Dion seconded it.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, our next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan Johnson Brothers Cranberries off Fosdick Road. I believe we got our engineer's report on, on this particular?
I can read it.
No. Uh, sub, preliminary subdivision. All right, and we will have to arrange a sidewalk.
We're good.
How are we doing today?
I'm doing fine, Mr. Chairman. Mark Flaherty, representing Johnson Cranberries. And we, we're in receipt of Fosdick O'Neill's comments, and we feel at this time, uh, we would like to roll the comments into, uh, in the preparation of definitive plan, so we'd like to move on to the definitive plan stage, and you have to kinda do your vote on the preliminary plan.
All right. Um, the board will accept the motion to disprove, uh, the preliminary subdivision plan of residences at Johnson Boggs.
So, what would be, what would we be voting yes for?
Yes would be to disprove it.
Okay.
Uh, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Gatski, seconded by Mr. Dion. Now, we're opening up for discussion. Um, there were a lot of concerns, and, uh, the application was never fully completed, right? Did you ever receive the N-RAD?
Um, not yet.
Okay, that's okay.
Yeah, that's-
Cause, uh, that you'll need for the definitive subdivision plan anyway, so. So the motion is to disprove, uh, the preliminary subdivision plans for residences at Johnson Boggs. An a would be a negative, and nay would be to approve it.
P A. Mr. Dion says yea.
John Gasky says aye.
Do you guys understand the, the motion? You guys made it.
Right, the-
To disapprove it.
We're disapproving it.
And you said a yeas.
Okay, so you're right, so I'm getting, you are correct, and I'm getting lost.
So a yea is to disapprove it.
A yea is to disapprove it.
Which I said yea.
Yes.
Mr. Gasky said yea.
I'm, I'm a little confused. Uh, Mr. Shea says yea.
Kevin Robinson says yea.
Ellen Sodillo says yea.
Right.
It's hot in here, I can go.
It's, it's late.
Oh, yeah.
I'm a little... I was actually gonna try and close the public hearing on it, so go after, excuse me.
Can we open a window or something?
I think we're almost done, aren't we?
Man.
I think we're almost done, Karen, I hope.
All right, our next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan Franklin Marsh LLC off Plymouth Street, and, uh, again, you received-
Yeah, we're gonna do, do the same thing.
Okay, we're gonna proceed in the same manner.
Okay.
Uh, the board will accept a motion to disapprove the preliminary subdivision plan Franklin Marsh LLC off Plymouth Street.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Gatski.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Dion. Discussion by the board.
Same deal, right?
Same deal.
Mr. Dion says yea.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says yea.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next order of business is preliminary subdivision plan-
Think about it. Oh, why didn't we think of this a long time ago?
I don't know either.
Takes a woman.
It immediately cooled the room down. Thank you. Preliminary subdivision plan A.D. Makepeace Company, Winkinko, zero and forty-six Federal Road. Uh, continuance was requested by the applicant until August ninth of twenty twenty-two?
That is correct.
All right, the board will accept a motion to continue the hearing after request of the applicant to August ninth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make that said motion.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, uh, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Any discussion among the board?
Mr. Dion says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Well, Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
All right. All right. Our next order of business is Carver Planning Board comment to Energy Siting Board regarding the comprehensive zoning exemption for Cranberry Point Energy Storage Discussion and Further Action. Basically, Mr. Bot, if you could give us a, a brief overview- Um, basically, Mr. Bott, if you could give us a, a brief overview of what was requested?
So, uh, Cranberry Storage has asked for, uh, a comprehensive zoning, uh, exemption. They're fully permitted, uh, by the planning board, site plan, special permit, uh, and they don't, in my opinion, need a comprehensive zoning exemption because they have been permitted, they have been extended. As we've talked about before, those, those, uh, extensions are lengthy considering, uh, the entire, uh, COVID extensions as well as the extensions they've asked for, and the fact that they didn't need any of those extensions to permit it in the first place. So I understand, uh, why they're doing it, because they're just very nervous about, uh, what might happen in the future, uh, but it doesn't seem like a particularly necessary, uh, 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 action to me, because it has been approved and it has been extended, uh, all under the current zoning, uh, in the town. And future zoning changes, uh, that may come out of battery storage or ener- or solar, uh, don't apply to this because, uh, they're, that, uh, moratoria pertains to, uh, future uses and not current, like permitted uses.
Well, currently in front of the State Siting Board, uh, Cranberry Point Storage Facility asked for a complete exemption from all Carver zoning bylaws, and we, the board will accept a motion to agree to that or disagree with that.
I'll make a motion to.
All right, no, all right, so, um...
I'm sorry.
No, we're.
No, that's okay. Do you, do you have a motion in mind?
No, you have, you have question, you have questions or?
We'll see if your motion clea- clears everything up.
Oh, oh, I was gonna make a motion to, um... For the letter to, uh, deny the exemption.
All right. A motion made to, uh... To write out, to.
Draft to.
Draft a, a letter to the Energy.
Energy Siting Board.
To deny the exemption of Cranberry Point from Carver zoning bylaws.
Correct, yes, so moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll make, I'll, I'll second that.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Gasky, seconded by Mr. Dionne. So basically, a yea vote will say that we do not agree that they should not be exempt from the zoning bylaws, and no vote would mean that you are in favor of exempting them from a comprehensive exemption from the zoning bylaws. Is there discussion among the board? Please.
Isn't this basically superfluous? If the state law allows it, you know, this is more of a, I don't know, feel-good, your arcanian type of rule?
Well, actually, because of, it's in, within our town and it's directly related to the, uh, to the planning board and, uh, what the planning board handles, which is the health and, and safety of, of the citizens and, and the town in general. It is, it is in direct relation to what we do, um...
But from a practical point, if state law overrides it and you're expressing an opinion, which is fine, but it's not going anywhere.
Well, that's not necessarily true. Um, whether this law is appropriately applied to this situation is another question, because the law says that, um, the Siting Board should make recommendations on specific zoning bylaws that they would like to see an exemption to, not a blanket exemption from all Carver zoning bylaws, and that's, that's a...
If they're over, uh, it's not a signal.
I would, that, that would be my opinion on the matter. Right, cause they're suppo- the State Siting.
We don't care about nothing.
Right.
Right.
The State Siting Board would have set up a committee to, to study the project and say there are certain, certain bylaws that we feel are inappropriate that would prevent this project to move forward, because this project is so important to energy sustainability or...
Right, it was, for the greater good of the greater good, but it wasn't harder than when the state was gonna say it's for the greater good.
Right.
And you guys are, you know, stuck in that.
And, uh, the project was approved and then it was extended, so the project is available for permitting. Um, and I suppose that, I, I couldn't even guess why they would request a comprehensive exemption. Any questions or comments from the, more discussion from the board? So a yea vote will allow us to draft a letter to the Siting Board denying their request. Mr. Dionne.
Mr. Dionne says yea.
John Gasky says yea.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
All right, the next question, um... The board would accept, uh, a motion to, um... That our statement is to be... It's almost exactly what the select board said in, so I'm just gonna read what the select board said in and change a couple odds and ends. If this is acceptable to the board, the board will accept a motion to approve this. On July 12th, 2022, the Carver Planning Board met and discussed the petition for a comprehensive exemption of the Carver zoning bylaws submitted by Cranberry Point Energy Storage LLC and voted five to zero to oppose the issuance of the comprehensive exemption permit based on concerns of health, safety, and appropriateness. Is that acceptable? I'll read it again. It's almost word for word what Mr. Fennessey sent to the board on behalf of the select board, so... I will accept a motion to approve that.
Yeah, it was just a date. You said, what, the 22nd?
No, I said on.
July 12th.
July 12th, 20.
Okay, now, all right.
See, it, cause I've got to change a couple, like.
Right.
It also says select board in here, so.
Uh, Mr. Dionne says aye.
Well, did we, did we move?
What do we do?
Do I have a motion to approve? I thought we did, but I only heard, um...
I'll make said motion.
Okay, I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Dionne, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Do you want me to reread it?
No, no, I, like I said, it was just a date. Uh, Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
All right.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Uh, I would also like to note to our vast viewing audience that the, uh, hearing for this is actually going on tonight.
Yes.
Uh, the comment period, however, is open until July 26th. Uh, the hearing tonight, uh, by the Siting Board is being recorded and will be available on their YouTube channel. So folks who are in the general public who might wanna send us a, a, a comment letter to the Siting Board, uh, can watch the entire proceedings, hear what people have to say, and craft whatever sort of letter individually they might wanna send in. That period ends 5:00 PM on July 26th. Hearing tonight, YouTube to be up shortly, and comment period ends July 26th, 5:00 PM.
And they would make those comments to the Massachusetts Energy Siting Board?
Right.
Which you can find on massgov.com.
Yeah, the, the link to the meeting is on the, um, town's website, the.
It's on the town website?
Correct.
Excellent. All right, um, number 13, recommendations of two planning board members for zoning bylaw committee. Now.
I would like to recommend Connie Shea.
I'll second that.
I would, I was, I was hoping for volunteers, but I will, I will accept your.
Well, you didn't ask for volunteers.
Well, I was, I was getting to it, so, but, uh, is there anybody that would like to volunteer? And, and, thank you. I will volunteer.
I, I'll volunteer. Or, do you wanna?
No.
I wish I had the time.
All right, so apparently it comes down to, uh, Mr. Gasky and Mr. Shea, and the board will accept a motion to confirm that the planning board recommends or votes to, uh, approve Mr. Gasky and Mr. Shea to the zoning bylaw study committee.
I would like to make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Robinson, seconded by Ms. Sodillo. Any discussion by the board?
No.
Good try, though.
Yeah, uh, the, the role of the associate member is to vote in the absence of a member on a special permit.
That's right.
Oh.
And, and we can fully understand you wanting to participate, because, uh, I know it, it can, it can get, it can be a tough time sitting in the ultimate chair. A motion was made. Mr. Dionne?
Uh, Mr. Dionne says aye.
I, I don't know. Can we vote for ourselves?
Yes, you can. Yes.
Yeah, John Gasky says aye, Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
All right, um, planning board member notes, planning board member notes, um... Not on the planning board, but, uh, from what I understand, uh, Shane is home and doing well.
Oh, nice.
It's been a long journey.
Yeah. That's great.
Our prayers go out to him.
Um, I have a couple of things.
Okay.
First off, I would like to congratulate, um, the Carver Youth Flag Football, uh, the Bog City Bandits. Couple weeks ago at Harvard University, our 15 U flag football team won the championship and have, uh, earned a place at Disney for the, um, for the national championship. So, I, if you guys, anybody else watching who wants to help get these boys down to Disney, I'm sure they're gonna be doing some fundraising to, uh, to assist with that.
That's fantastic.
Um, on top of that, the younger teams, um, we just got them together. Um, Harvard, um, was a, um, was a challenge for those guys. Um, it was an enjoyable weekend, and then the following weekend, fa- uh, last weekend at Rhode Island, um, all of our teams made it into the playoffs with our 10 U team winning, uh, getting third seed, uh, but losing in the, uh, elimination rounds, uh, as well as the, uh, eight U team advancing before, uh, losing, and the 14 U team, uh, advanced before, uh, falling to defeat. But it was a good showing by, um, by the Bog City Bandits, um, and, uh, congratulations to you guys. Secondly, um, had a request, uh, Mr. Jermaine, uh, has asked for an apology of my previous statement, um, back at the previous, uh, at the previous meeting last week, uh, that he was an employee of S L T. Um, I'd like to offer up a clarification, uh, that he is not, uh, an employee of S L T, but rather he is a contractor for S L T, and I am unaware of the total compensation for Mr. Jermaine, uh, may have received from S L T, and therefore am not privy to any financial gain, uh, he has gained from, uh, his dealings with S L T.
I'll say.
That's, uh, that's my comments.
All right, next thing is planning director notes.
Uh, I have a lot of stuff for you to sign. You signed, uh, the decisions, thank you very much. We've got, uh, the mylar's from tonight, as well as some paper copies of the A and R we signed last. Actually, those are done, you guys, which you guys did those. So I got some plans for you guys to sign before you head out.
All right. Um, minutes from 6:14, 2022, the board will accept the motion to approve the minutes of 6:14, 2022.
I'll make said motion.
Motion made by Ms. Sodillo.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Any discussion? Mr. Dionne?
Mr. Dionne says aye.
John Gasky says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Ellen Sodillo says aye.
Excellent, uh, thank you all for joining us, especially you, Andy. It's always a pleasure.